attendance office at least two business days in advance and we'll see what we can do. This meeting is being broadcast live on both Zoom and YouTube and is also being recorded. All recordings are posted on our www.musd.org website for public viewing. Closed captioning is available on Zoom. Click the closed captioning icon and then live transcription and it will appear on your screen. Lastly, if there are any additional documents that were not part of the agenda, those are public records and available upon request. Thank you so much and back to you President Yipchwan.
Thank you very much Scott. Moving on to item seven, closed session announced. In closed session, the board voted four to zero to approve the resignation agreement for a certificated manager effective September 30th, 2022 and was approved by the following votes. President Kelly Yipchwan, yes. Vice President Chris Norwood, yes. Clerk Minno, yes. Trustee Han Lin, yes. Trustee Michael Tsai, absent. In addition, regarding the confidential report, 2023.1, the board voted to move to expel the student. President Kelly Yipchwan, yes. Vice President Norwood, yes. Clerk Minno, yes. Trustee Han Lin, yes. Trustee Michael Tsai, absent. Before we review and approve the open session agenda, let's do a roll call for our student board reps.
Okay, roll call. In attendance, Student Board Rep Rocha from Calhoun.
Here.
Okay, and let's see, Student Board Rep Nikita Sharma from Milpitas High School.
Here.
And Student Board Rep Mira Bhakta from Middle College High School. I don't think she's here at this time.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item eight, review and approve the open session agenda.
Motion to approve the open session agenda.
Oh, one second. Uh, this board member, Michael Tsai, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Um, two things for, uh, yeah, I, I did look over the agenda. I think we're missing the item for AB 361. Unless, unless it is on there and I didn't see it.
AB 361 was brought to the board at the last meeting?
Uh, you're right, and we have the option to, um, take a look at every meeting if we want to do that, um, every 30 days, um, whether it's a yes or a no, um, we still do have that option to look at it and, um, I believe I did put in the request for it to be on the agenda, so, um.
As you said, trustee Tsai, every 30 days, so 30 days from the last board meeting would be October.
Well, no, it's, it's on a rolling basis on what I understand. For example, at this meeting, we could decide to start going forward.
President Yipchwan, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you, board members. Hi, we're going to continue with review and approve the open session agenda and we have a motion to approve. And there's a second. Let's do a call, a roll call vote, Scott?
Okay, roll call vote. Board Member Tsai.
I'm going to abstain.
Board Member.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
And Board President Yipchwan.
Yes.
Passes four zero.
Thank you very much Scott. And at this time, we're going to ask the NJROTC from Milpitas High School to come up and help us lead the flag of a pledge of the flag salute. Please come up and state your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Cheng and accompanying me here today are Cadet Mendoza, Cadet Nguyen, and Cadet Conde. Please rise with us for the flag salute. Remove all hats and hoods and place your right hands over your hearts. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You may be seated.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your service. Okay, comments from the public. Are there any comments, um, from the public at this time going on virtual?
We have no virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, we do have some green cards up here and I'm going to call up, I think it's a couple, right? So, um, Adriana and, uh, Zariel, from Rose Elementary School.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Jordan. Uh, I'm a Rose parent and have three kids at Rose. I'm joined here by my husband Ariel and other concerned parents, our kids. I believe we may have some parents, uh, attending virtually as well. And I'm here to address the grotesque and continuous vandalism at Rose Elementary School, which involves feces being left all over our campus continuously since last March of 2021. I first noticed the feces on my way to school in May of 2021 with my kids. As I arrived, there were feces smeared all in front of the campus, on the walkways, on the railings, on the, um, the railing ramp, on the ramp, the railing of the ramps. And at first I thought this must be a prank. It wasn't smudges and I apologize for the graphics of this, but it was pounds of feces, as if someone had collected them to vandalize our school. Uh, I was concerned and I posted on Nextdoor to inform the community and to ask the community to respond to law enforcement if they have witnessed anything. I was harassed by someone on that post who later I learned was our suspect. I took the post down because I had concerns for my family's safety, for my kids' safety. But the incidents have continued. We walked to school every day, watchful of any feces that may have been left on our sidewalks and walkways, often stepping over and around when they are there. In August, he smeared feces on the cafeteria door handles and wrote a swear word. Our kids and parents saw it. I've been made aware that the suspect will stand across the street and watch staff clean up, up the feces. He'll walk around the perimeter of the campus. My husband will continue.
You can continue.
Oh, okay, thank you. He'll walk around the perimeter of the campus while staff are arriving and stare at them. He has verbally harassed staff. These are all very concerning acts of aggression. We understand that measures have been taken. We understand that our school and our district staff are, have cooperated with the police and have taken steps to end this act of aggression, however, it has not stopped. The suspect is clearly not well and relentless effort must be taken until this activity stops before something more serious occurs. And that's why we are here, because we are concerned and afraid that this person will act in a more aggressive manner. An increase in resources must be allocated to resolve this matter, which is not only a biohazard issue, but a matter of safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent Jordan, I know that, um, there are actions made, but, uh, please connect with the staff to make sure they, uh, know what the plans are as far as that's concerned. Appreciate it.
Okay, our next green card we have is Julie Plummer from Rose, uh, Elementary, Rose Parents.
My name is Julie Plummer. I have been in this community for years. My children go to Rose or have gone to Rose. We are very proud of Rose. It does not have the most up-to-date facilities, but we do have staff, as you know, that are longtime members. We even have a staff member who used to go to Rose. We love Rose. We care about the school. We care about the staff members and the children there. We want to know how we, as parents, can stop this from happening, this vandalism that's happening at our school. We, I stand with other parents from Rose and staff members to provide a safe and, um, environment for our children. So I am here to offer our assistance as parents. We can do to work with the, um, greater community and also the educators if we need to provide money or other resources that we can, we want a partnership with the district as parents and how we can find ways to resolve this issue. We understand that it is not easily resolved, but we are happy to work with the district to, to get this solution made. So I stand with all the parents and we are, we're willing to work with the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent Jordan, I'm believing we were talking about some district campus safety, um, measures. It seems that this is possible, one of the things that could be included, um, or district safety, district campus safety committees. As the teacher described and the parent described, it sounds like there is some synergy around that, especially with the support of them, so if we can, um, investigate that, as Min had said, so we can follow up.
Yes, and actually that's part of my State of the District report today.
Thank you.
Great minds think alike. Okay, we're moving on to item 11, MUSD strategic goals. Build a we, a culture of we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers. Focus services and support system to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify career, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Item 12, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I would like to first start with our recognitions. First, I would like to ask Sydney Moon, who is one of our students, and she won a gold medal for her team freestyle form on the USA Taekwondo National Championships. So I'd like to invite Sydney to come to the front for a picture with our board and our cabinet and your family as well. Sydney, would you like to say a few words about your endeavor?
What comments in the train?
Yeah.
How long have you been doing this and what did it take?
Um, I've been doing Taekwondo for 11 years and recently, this past summer, I went to Salt Lake City, Utah to compete at the USA Taekwondo National Championships and my team won a gold medal.
That's awesome, Sydney. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize Assistant Principal from Weller, Rajep Iskand. Rajep is, uh, one of our members of our Culture of We Equity Team. He is one of our assistant principals who leads, uh, other assistant principals as well as he is an integral member of our leadership team and is working with all of us, not only on equity, but also, uh, learning how to do restorative justice circles and reconnecting students as well as staff members who, uh, might find that they need to be welcomed back into the community. So, uh, Assistant Principal Iskand, I'd love to recognize you for your recognition in the National Magazine K-12 as an educator to watch.
Wow. Um, well, first of all, this is, uh, a reminder that, that Weller means love and I really appreciate all of you coming out. Um, it, this award, this was a blast of sunshine, uh, that, uh, I didn't realize I needed. Uh, so when it came, it was, it was so very welcome, uh, but it was, it was a big reminder for me that, uh, I work with great people. I work with people who enable me to do this work, um, all the way from our executive cabinet, our board, um, to the, to the incredible teachers that, that I get a chance to work with, uh, and the staff. Uh, but I have to say, our, our students and our families, like that's, um, that's where my passion is, uh, they really enable me to do this work, so, um, I'm just full of gratitude. Appreciate everybody. Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
And if you have the Weller love, come and join us.
That's right, come on up.
He's here? Oh, okay, good. All right, Sukar is going to be presenting a report to us first, so if everybody could take a seat. So Sukar, while we're getting that ready, Sukar is, Sukar is a Eagle Scout at Milpitas High School and he did this fantastic experiment and, um, solution for water and we asked him if he would please do a report on what he learned and also the impact.
Uh, okay. Uh, I want to thank you all for having me today. Uh, hi. Okay, uh, I had a pleasure talking with Mr. Norwood for a good, like, hour and a half, um, on the weekend on this whole, uh, project and, uh, I'm a junior at Milpitas High School. Um, I'm involved in marching band, various clubs on campus. I've been doing martial arts, um, volunteering since I was little and what scouts taught me was always give back to my community. So two years ago during COVID, I thought, what can, what is a Eagle project that will help the community? And I thought, since California is in a drought and I'm going to be a freshman on campus, why not help my clubs and the MHS garden? So that is why I built three rainwater harvesting barrels, which hold up to 150 gallons of water. And currently, just last week, we've been using this water to clean the recycling bins that Environmental Society, um, works on throughout the year. Um, the purpose of this was to use for other ASP activities and clubs as also what we want to do this year is try to reinstate the garden at MHS. So what we use it is to clean over 50 recycling barrels, but we want to expand this more. And, uh, I want to use this sort of as a publicity to get people notified because on campus, because it's on one building, not many students are notified that this is, uh, an effect that we have, that they can use to help conserve water. Even a small amount of water, I think, can go along a big way if 3,000 kids start using it. Uh, yeah. So what my goal is, as you see on the slide, is I want to expand this system. Um, I did my Eagle project two years ago, but now working with Environmental Society, I want to expand this to a middle school, to an elementary, because I know that all elementary schools, when I was there, we all had a garden, not just garden, but there are always any activities students do that require, uh, a use of water that we can provide for them and that we harvest when it rains. And it only, it only takes about two inches of rainwater to fill three barrels. So if we make a good system, and I saw that some elementary schools already have started doing this system themselves, and it's provided a good, um, use and effect. So, um, when I was talking to Mr. Norwood, uh, we came across the cost and it only costs around 200 to 300 for three barrels and the whole plumbing system. And if you want to get more complicated, it'll cost more. But, uh, I've been trying to apply for a grant, uh, for the Milpitas Grant and also the Santa Clara, uh, Santa Clara Valley Water Grant, which will, with your guys' help, I could probably get a grant and we could start doing these systems in other schools and community, the community will benefit in itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sukar. Do you have a faculty sponsor? And Sukar, are your parents here? Oh, let's have a moment. Do you have a faculty as Mr., um, Barrett?
Oh, Mr. Barrett, I did this with Mr. Rojas.
Okay. Well, uh, let's, let's connect and if you, let's get a faculty sponsor and I have a grant idea.
Thank you.
There's a faculty sponsor. And we have our associate principal. That's the last of our recognitions. Okay, next I would like to do my superintendent's report. So this is our status report on COVID and COVID protection efforts. You see that we have 263 students and 45 staff to date who have had COVID, so that's an increase of 22 students and 10 staff members since the last time I gave the report two weeks ago. We've also handed out over 57,000 test kits because, again, as a reminder to everybody, the big arm of surveillance testing, surveillance testing means being able to catch COVID and keep the person who has it at home before that person can come to school or work to spread it is in the home. So that's why it's so important when you receive these test kits that you use them. And then I'd also like to point out, this is available to everybody on the Centers for Disease Control, that currently Santa Clara County is in the low, uh, status for, uh, COVID, the COVID virus spread. And as you may have heard, there is now a new vaccine which adds to the old COVID vaccine and provides, uh, antibodies towards Omicron. And we are holding a vaccine clinic at Burnett on October 25th. And my understanding, it will also be other vaccines made available such as the flu vaccine because it is also important that we get our flu shots. And for those of us who are able, there's the shingle shot and pneumonia shot as well. Last weekend was the Air High School Alumni Reunion and that is an incredible experience if you haven't been to it before. It's a cross-section of all of the classes. I remember seeing 1961 to 1979 at the reunion and that's where we made public our phase of the Capitol Campaign for the MUSD Innovation Campus by launching, uh, bricks. And so you can log onto our website and purchase bricks and have your message engraved. And as Mr. Forstner likes to say, you can become a permanent part of paving the way to the future on the MUSD Innovation Campus. Now for our Safety First Report, which I alluded to during public comment. Thank you very much for, parents, for sharing your concerns with us. And tonight's, uh, report touches on strategic goals number four, which is around assuring that we have social, emotional, learning supports and academic supports in place and strategic goal number five, which is assuring a healthy, healthy learning environment. So first I'd like to talk about preparation. Preparation means that we have plans in place for all aspects of safety, whether it be social, emotional safety or fire drills or also, um, intruder drills, as well as making sure that where possible, we have things such as perimeter barriers to prevent or, uh, make it more difficult for somebody to cause harm to our students and our staff. And as I mentioned at last time's report, we have some fencing that is coming up at some of the sites where there already is existing fencing, but it needs to be fortified and Rose is an example of one of the schools. So we will have fencing in place at Rose on the whole perimeter in February. And then, uh, the other piece is training. And so tomorrow during our leadership meeting, which has all of our leaders, uh, both classified meeting supervisors and directors of our departments like student nutrition and grounds and business, as well as all of our leaders in the schools and also in the district office support team, we will be reviewing, uh, the requirements for safety plans, the, uh, procedures for run, hide, and fight, run, hide, and fight for, um, those times which hopefully will never occur here in Milpitas, uh, where we might need to protect ourselves against an intruder. And then there is also training tomorrow for our leaders on, uh, threat assessments and crisis intervention. So a threat assessment might be somebody who's threatening to cause harm to themselves or to others and, uh, crisis intervention is what happens, uh, in the moment of a crisis and afterwards, uh, in the event that we have somebody who has caused harm to themselves or to others. And then finally, is community collaboration. And as Vice President Norwood asked about, we have discussed at, um, my last couple of reports to the board, the importance of creating a community, uh, committee. And we are going to use the existing, uh, format, which requires a safety committee at the district level site, but we're going to expand that to include parents. And I received, uh, email last night, thank you very much, um, for that from our Rose Parents, and this would be a great opportunity, as I think you were talking about, for us to begin that work as our safety committee collaborative. And, um, so I do plan to respond with a possible time for Friday for us to meet and, uh, we can move on that way. And then our supervisor. And then our supervisor of grounds and transportation and safety, Mr. Acosta, will also be working with me to get the community collaboration expanded for our district safety committee. And that concludes my state of the district report.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Oh, one other thing I would just like to mention, since it does tie into safety and it was brought up today. So, and I will trusty know, make sure that the staff at Rose is well aware that we have, in addition to the police surveillance, that police have amped up this last week, both on foot as well as other means, which I don't want to share publicly. We have also hired security to be at the site in the early morning. And our grounds team inspects the site every morning so that if there is any feces, the team can have it cleaned up and sanitized before staff and students arrive at school. And then I really look forward to how parents can support us as well, because it really has become a neighborhood watch effort. And putting that into gear, I'm not sure if the Rose area has a neighborhood watch, but this is definitely a great opportunity to have one initiated if it doesn't already. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much, Superintendent. Okay, so item 13 is also the Superintendent's Executive Cabinet reports.
So I would like to first invite up our Associate Principal and Schooling Services Coordinator from Milpitas High School. They're going to give us an update on the Wellness Center, which we have located in the library. And as I shared two board meetings ago, is the outcome of our planning grant for community schools.
Good evening. My name is Skylar Dregger. I'm the Associate Principal at Milpitas High School, and I am up here with
I'm Nicole Stewart, your Schooling Services Coordinator.
And social worker extraordinaire. And we are presenting on the changes at Milpitas High School in our mental health and wellness supports for students that are happening this year. We are, Scott's looking for slides right now. We may also be able to do it without all of them. There we go. Go ahead and just skip to slide three. Thank you.
So before I get started, just a few disclaimers that I like to share with folks. I like to remind parents, you all have one or two teenagers at home, and you know how stressful that can be. We have 3,000 teenagers with us on campus at Milpitas High, and it's our privilege to be able to support them, not just academically, but with their mental health and wellness. So this year we got a grant from the County Office of Education for a Wellness Center at Milpitas High. Space is always at a premium, so we are in the back end of the library, and we are creating that space as we speak. We have a few new staff members on campus that the slide shares. Myself, we have a Wellness Center liaison and a Wellness Center specialist that are paid for by the County Office of Education in coordination and collaboration with this grant. You'll notice, and then we also have three mental health counselors, and that is one of our district priorities. Superintendent Jordan's priority for mental health in our schools. You'll notice there's one square that says coming soon. We are still waiting for one staff member from the county, because the county does the hiring and the HR processing and all that fun stuff. And that person will be coming next week, which unfortunately is a week to I'm actually going out on leave for three months, and that person's coming on the first week I leave. So we will be coordinating some communication and making sure that those staff members that are new to Milpitas High Campus get acclimated to our admin staff, our guidance staff, and our security staff.
Scott, if you want to go to the next slide, slide four really quickly. There is an important distinction in that we're talking about several separate systems here. There's the MHS Wellness Center, which is a grant-funded center that we're opening. There are also new mental health counselors, which is very, they're completely separated, but the, the system is linked. So where a student may see their academic counselor, who then makes a referral to either the Wellness Center or a mental health counselor, depending on the situation. And those two systems may interact depending on the needs of the student on that day and long term.
And our ultimate goal is to, is to provide those social-emotional supports for our students. I don't know if you guys can see my shirt, but it says Maslow's before blooms. And that means that we have to make sure our kids feel safe and secure and our, their basic needs are met before learning can even begin to happen. And because we are a school and learning is our priority, we want to create the environment where our students have the ability and the nervous system to learn. And we can do that through the Wellness Center and through the way that we will be regulating students. In the next few months, our Wellness Center staff from the county will be working with our site staff at MHS to create what we are calling the SWAG, the Student Wellness Advisory Group. And this group of students will be the ones who drive what we do in our Wellness Center, what activities we have, what programming we bring in, what we offer to students, and when we offer it. But if you notice this slide, this is some of the, some of the things that we will offer in that wellness space for students during the day. We are open a half hour before school and up to a half hour after school. And eventually, the hope is that we could potentially also be open in the summer. Right now, we won't be open in the summer, but potentially we can extend our grant and be available for our students over the summer.
And what we're doing right now tonight is just introducing you to. We'd love to come back probably in February and maybe provide you with an overview of how the system is functioning, because right now we're in the setup phases. We have parts of it operating separately from each other, but we have not yet been able to open the whole entire process. Do you have any questions for us?
Yes. You said grant. Would you share with us, how much is the grant?
It's part of a $200,000 grant.
Thank you.
And with that grant, we are able to purchase furniture. We have a lot of things. They actually gave us, they're calling it kits. They gave us two kits. And in those kits, we have, I think we got like 67 books that are mental health-related for students to check out, very youth-oriented. We have fidget toys. We have yoga supplies. We have journal supplies. We have art supplies. We get a punching bag. We have bean bags. We will make that space what our students need, certainly with their input.
And it's at MHS, and it's right behind the library, you said?
It's in the, it's in the library, in the backside of the library.
Okay, we can visit, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. We currently just completed building the offices for our mental health counselors and for the Wellness Center. And the Wellness Center space right now, we're in the process of getting furniture and setting that up. It's where the, if you were here long enough ago, the old College and Career Center was when it was located in the library.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Skylar, this question is directed toward you. What is the desired, where could we see the result of this center being successful in data?
So we will be, that's a long-term question, of course. And so what is happening right now is this is being set up, so we don't have data yet. The data will come in regards to the documentation that occurs with the students entering and exiting, as well as, you know, finding out how they're feeling about it. But in terms of true actual data, data for something like this, you're probably looking at a three-year commitment to be able to really judge the returns on how it is affecting overall student mental health. It's, it's not, with students, it's not, oh, we had two meetings and everything is fine. You got, if you have your teenagers of your own, you know that there's a learning process involved. It is, it is kind of how we're interacting over time.
Thank you. And I think that's where I was curious, because grants, one-year, multi-year, you can apply for funding. Can someone talk to me briefly about that?
I believe, well, this is a multi-year grant, and the hope is that this is ongoing, hopefully forever. I know sometimes when we have crises like a pandemic, a lot of money comes in, and it's one-time funds. Like we had our ELO funds last year. We have our ARP funds this year. I don't know if this Wellness Grant, I'm not sure how it's funded with the county, so I don't know if it's long-term.
Yeah, currently it's under the planning grant, and then the next phase is the implementation grant.
But I do know this is a county-wide effort, and they, it's from the top down. So it's definitely something that they want to fund. In the short term, what we will see data-wise is students staying in class longer and being able to regulate themselves in that classroom. The Wellness Center visits will be 15 minutes or less. It's not a kid coming out of a classroom to just hang out. They will be coming into the Wellness Center. They will be triaged. They will get their regulation and be asked to go back to class. If they need more than that, they will be then shifted over to the specialist. The specialist from the county is a social worker. She is a licensed clinical social worker, and she was a Schooling Services Coordinator for about six years. So she has all the knowledge I do. I'm thrilled she's coming to us. I specifically requested her. Don't tell anybody. And she will be the one who can, I know. She can be the one who will do actually long-term sessions with students and then refer them out to therapy or counseling if they need more support.
And I'd also like to, to note, Chris, that keep in mind that the grant-funded part of this is just the Wellness Center. So there's one therapist and one coordinator associated with that grant, with that physical space. If, let's say that were to fall apart and go away, what we do still have is our, the system on campus that we already have, which consists of our academic counselors and our mental health counselors, who are now housed in that same location to provide kind of a continuity of them being able to interact with each other and work as a team. And as well as that physical space that wouldn't go away. And so we would love to see all components remain for many, many years, but if we did lose our grant, we don't lose everything. We use one component of it.
And I would love for Priti to add to this conversation, because I know that this type of thing, in terms of students being prepared for classrooms, she's compassionate, she's very passionate about, so.
Where, excuse me, Vice President Norwood, are you, I'm not sure if you're asking Priti because you think that she was part of it, but Mary Jude is actually, Mary Jude is actually the executive director.
Then that's the person.
Okay.
Sure, I can add to that, just to say that it is a partnership. It's an ongoing partnership. In addition to this grant, we are looking at creating Wellness Centers on our other campuses as well. This is the first tier to that process. In terms of looking at the data, I think the other thing that I would piggyback on what Skylar said, that is that we, we hope to see student, and what Nicole said as well, we hope to see students in class longer periods of time, but also as students are more regulated, feel a sense of belonging, know where they can go for assistance. Hopefully, we'll see discipline and struggles decreasing. And so the data may be reflected in that as well, but that won't show overnight necessarily as well.
And we are seeing some of those positive outcomes just with the, with the support systems that we were able to bring in place last year, which was the involvement of the City Peace Project, which is continuing. And so we are seeing several of what we call, you know, term our high flyers, students that are kind of traditionally out of the classroom, being more successful this year. It's not perfect, but in comparison to last year, we're making progress.
I will also just add on to that, the mental health counselors that we have added in that program as we're expanding that, the integration and the collaboration, the proximity and the, and being able to debrief and support kids in that moment with the right level of support is also critical to the program. And as Skylar mentioned, you know, our, our hope is that we continue all of these pieces, but we're also building internal capacity in addition to having the support from the county.
And our Wellness Center is our Tier One, so it's available to all students anytime. It will also offer Tier Two, which would be smaller groups. So as we get to know what the kids are stressed about or what they're dysregulated over, we will then pull together groups. We already know we need a grief group. We need a student, a young, you know, kids of divorce group. And we probably need a healthy relationships group. And just as a reminder, you know, these kids are seniors. Their last full school year was in eighth grade before the pandemic, and we're still seeing the impacts of the lack of that peer interaction during that key developmental stage. So the Wellness Center is a perfect opportunity for us to give kids that little bit that they've been missing. And they can come back multiple times, but 15 minutes at a time, and then we gently get them back to class. I think we'll see a lot of impact from this.
Thank you.
Yes, and if I could just add in, trustee Norwood, you write this. This is the kind of stuff I get very excited about. And, and it's really, it's the partnership, right, of how Mary Jude and I work together. And the dots that I would just want to connect here is when we talk about multiple-tiered systems of support, it's the academic and the social-emotional, like that T-shirt is right, Maslow's before blooms. So we know that we need to meet students' social-emotional needs so that we can do the deeper learning work, and this is a great foundation for that. And just to echo what Skylar said, that this is the academic counseling and the mental health counseling is coming together. We're building systems and structures to make sure kids are getting those Tier One supports, and then if needed, Tier Two and Tier Three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure that Ariana, our new student board rep, has any questions. She can feel free to ask or make comments, and she's our high school student.
Um, I don't have any questions, but I think you guys are doing a great thing by proceeding with this, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Later, when you come back for, we'll do a full report, and it would be helpful to also include the city, city peace projects, since you brought that up, and how that's a component too. That'd be great. Thank you. And now I would like to ask Wendy, our Chief Business Officer.
Good evening, everyone. I have two reports for tonight. And the first, I will start with the business services. We're currently working with the district's external auditors to complete the financial statement audit for the 2021-22 school year. There was a new standard, which, which was a number 87 issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It's also called GASP 87, that the district would need to implement. The district will need to record the total long-term lease revenue as a potential income in the state tax form in the 21-22 audit. So you will see a proposed audit adjustment in our 21-22 audit report to reflect this change. So the district can use that information to record this potential income in our financial system as a beginning balance to move forward. My second report is for our bond department. This past Wednesday, we had our Quarterly Bond Oversight Committee meeting at Maple Meadows. I see our loyal audience, Tom Valori, Mr. Valori is one of our committee members. And we normally begin our meetings with a tour of the campus, so the committee members can see the completion of the projects. And staff also prepare a quarterly report for each meeting. If I may, can share, this is how our quarterly report looks like. We'll normally have a picture, and then in each of the report, we will provide a status update of each project. For this report period will be from June to September. And then we'll have an overview of the project status along with some financial statement and also the budget. This past report, we had the full expenditure vendor report for the last fiscal year. And you can find this CBOC report on the district website as well. So with that, it concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. And Mary Jude and Priti are Executive Directors of Learning and Development.
Good evening. So over the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to attend two different conferences. The first one was with Principal Clarissa Scott. She and I attended a conference in Riverside hosted by the California Coalition Dedicated to Dual Enrollment with our partners Director Mooney from San Jose City College and our, our very own middle college teacher, Mandy Lau Manluco. It was a great opportunity to partner with folks directly from the California Department of Education on upcoming funding opportunities, as well as learn from schools across the state about best practices for middle college and early college programs. Our own middle college team also presented a session titled "A Silicon Valley Startup: Year One of a Middle College." They did a great job fielding questions from others looking to start their own middle college programs. Last week, we started to wrap up our grant, the Collaborative Opportunity Grant. So in this case, I worked with our partners from San Jose State and San Jose City College to share the learning from piloting the TechXcellence Summer Academy Program. We also refined our pitch to continue gathering ongoing funding to support the development of this program, which focuses on expanding access to our female students as well as Black and Latino students into the computer, increasing their access into the Computer Science Program specifically at San Jose State, which is deeply impacted. Lastly, we have been busily Lastly, we have been busily preparing in the learning and development department for our C-SACE Equity Summit that will take place this Thursday afternoon at Randall Elementary. District administrators will be partnering with site principals, teachers, and families to act the root causes of significant disproportionality in our district. We, it will be about 50 of us working together through some incredibly complex data as we unpack the success gaps. And I want to thank Trustee No ahead of time for joining us on Thursday for this. My final update is that due to scheduling conflicts for our community attendees, Coordinator Sugimura has set a new date and time for the community input meeting for the third language at Randall, Randall School. It will now be Monday, October 17th at 5:00 p.m., and we will make this a hybrid event to increase access and participation.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll share highlights from our Child Development Center program. We held two back-to-school nights this past week for the Child Development Center preschool programs at Sunny Hills and Rose, and then another one for our school age program at Rose and Synnet. Both nights were attended well by our parents and guardians, and they got to have the opportunity to have their questions answered. Next week, we'll be holding another back-to-school night for our preschool families with students with disabilities, so that we can answer their questions and to focus on the unique structures and supports that are in place for our littlest learners to have the maximum success that they can have in school. And then finally, a shout out, a big shout out to our CDC teachers and our preschool inclusion staff, who spent their Saturday, this past Saturday, in training with the County Office of Education, learning the new creative curriculum that was piloted last year, and we are in the beginning implementation stage of Part One this year. It was a fabulous and a fun day of adult learning. This concludes our LND report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the, Mary Jude, on your last part of your report about having the, back, as you said, did you say back to school for preschool? Or you said something about meeting preschool parents with special needs?
Yes.
Will the MIPTA be available? Or have they been considered to be a part of that so that the parents realize besides the academic community, they have a parent community as well for support?
That can be shared with the parent group that evening, the MIPTA, the Milpitas Inclusive PTA. We will be meeting for our board meeting next Monday. However, the, the back-to-school night is specifically for the parents who have students in the program, either getting direct, like speech and OT services, or the special day class program with supports that way. So it's to help them understand what school looks like for their students at school. I can bring up the MIPTA at that, that evening to let them know as far as getting involved with that. Is that what you were referencing?
Yes, I was, because sometimes parents learn or listen, they understand parent language sometimes.
Sure.
A bit better. So, I mean, that was one of the reasons why that was formed, was to help to build a community so that we can find the right way to support those students. And sometimes they share information with their peers prior to sharing it, who help them navigate some of the understanding. So I was just asking about that, but thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And online, we have Assistant Soup of Human Relations, Jonathan.
Good evening, trustees and Cheryl Jordan. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Look, fantastic. Brief report, I'm reporting from Sacramento because I'm at the ACSE Personnel Institute, busily learning more about negotiations and HR functions of our department and around the state. And we have also redesigned our HR analyst position so we can support our employees, so that'll be posted online very soon. I also wanted to give a brief shout out to my Director of Human Relations, our Director, Damon James, who's been working valiantly with the program from San Jose State. It's our residency program where we have student teachers aligned and in classrooms every day with our teachers so that they can get all of the supports needed to become a teacher, and this is new to our district and five other districts in the area. And Damon puts a lot of time and energy to build in the protocols and processing to support our new student teachers, who our, our hope is to have them remain in our district for any open positions that we'll have in the future. And then I think that's it for my report in the interest of time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent and your executive cabinet team. Item 14 is the board group agreements. The board group agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected officials. Board, per board bylaws, 9001 amended on November 26, 2019, board members and the superintendent agrees to.
Keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus. Ask questions for our own understanding.
Be open and honest with each other. No surprises. Includes unapproved communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and board.
Be aware that our behavior in the community reflects on us as a team. Communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and in advanced public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act.
Actively support the culture of we in action, deed, and opportunity to serve the students and parents of Milpitas Unified School District.
You missed the number seven.
Oh, my apologies. Seven, participate in a professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be informed and effective leader. Actively support the culture of we in action, deed, and opportunity to serve the students and parents of Milpitas Unified School District.
Thank you very much. Board communications request. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on the activities of selected representatives. School board members may request the placement of items in future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The student board representative reports on school and student activities. Reports are limited to 90 seconds each. Let's start with the student board reps.
Ariana, why don't you go first?
Calaveras Hills High School. The Calaveras Hills High School back-to-school night was Thursday, September 15th at 5:30 p.m. We had a really good.
I'm struggling to hear you.
Oh, my apologies.
Okay, here we go.
Sorry. The Calaveras Hills High School back-to-school night was Thursday, September 15th at 5:30 p.m. We had a really good turnout. We provided dinner with the families. Mr. Downey from the City Peace Project and Mr. Quong from the Workability Program attended and talked to the parents as well. Engineering, busy preparing for the robotics competition. One prototype is done and students began programming yesterday. The Lions Clip and Student Elections are getting started. Students have been notified and are working on their speeches and letters. The full, the first school site council meeting was held at 4:30 today. Your book and leadership is starting to plan our first spirit week in October with a focused inclusive activities to help build our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Student Board Rep Sharma of Milpitas High School, go right ahead with your report.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Hello, I'm the school board rep for Milpitas High School, and I'm going to be just giving a quick brief on ASB-led activities at school. Powerpuff has begun last week and will continue until the championship on October 12th, and it is basically a competition between all four classes in girls' football. Secondly, Latin and Hispanic Heritage Week will be happening next week, and we will feature activities like Lotharia and contributions to a cultural poster. Lastly, and most importantly, homecoming is coming up, and this year, our theme will be Greek mythology. An important pivot we're taking this year is to make sure our court is gender neutral, and our homecoming court is trying to represent role models for a school. So this year, we're asking teachers and students to nominate students based on kindness, passion, and humor. Lastly, our football game will be on October 14th. We will feature a parade for classes to display their finished floats, and we'll have activities such as laurel wreath making and other activities that tie into our theme of Greek mythology. And lastly, I want to just invite our board and anyone who has access to this video or this meeting to come join us during homecoming, because it's an amazing event for alumni and other members of our community. Thank you.
Okay, and that is all our student board reps for today.
Thank you very much, Scott. And now we're going to move on to board members. Let's start with Trustee Ty. How about Trustee Leon?
Thank you, President Yipchuan, and good evening.
Wait, hello. Sorry.
Wait, can you hold on? Trustee Lynn is speaking right now, so I'll call you in your neck.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, continue, Trustee Lynn.
Okay, so a couple of meetings that I have attended over the past two weeks, which is the SMART program that City just launched on September 15. I also attended the Public Safety and Emergency Prepariness Committee, and I was there at Murphy Park to help out with the brick selling and to meet a lot of the Air alumni, and that was, and the Lotharia meeting. I also want to mention to President Yipchuan and Superintendent Jordan, if you would bring this to your collaborative meeting with the city, that if we can increase SMART location to our schools to help out with the traffic and convenient for our learners. Thank you.
Thank you. And how about Trustee Michael Ty?
Hello, good evening. Can, can everyone hear me? Okay, great. So I did go to a closed-session board meeting last week. Do you want to say I, I tried to go to the closed session today, but I wasn't given a Zoom link. I spoke to the Nevoy Association about public safety issues and what we can do to, you know, stop our hate crimes against the Asian-American community. Went to a number of other events, and, oh, I joined the State of the City in San Jose, and I'll see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Board Clerk No.
Thank you, Madam President Yipchuan. I attended the Mexican flag raising ceremony here in the city of Milpitas. And speaking of flag raising, Superintendent Jordan, I'm looking around this room, and I think when this first opened, we said we would put flags of different countries in here, so.
Thanks for your reminder.
Yeah, could you look into that, please?
Yes, I will.
And I attended the Confucius Memorial Ceremony here at the Techo of San Francisco, Milpitas. That concludes my report.
Thank you. VP Norwood.
I'm going to echo the comments of my colleague Minno in terms of the Mexican heritage flag raising at City Hall, and also attended the Confucius Ceremony yesterday. I'll concede the rest of my time.
Thank you. And as for me, I went to the SMART event ribbon cutting at City Hall, Burnett School Site Council meeting, PTA Council meeting, air fundraising, selling the bricks, Mexican flag raising, school, city school collaborative meeting, Women's Leadership and Policy Summit, and the Confucius Memorial Celebration. And then finally, I would like to wish our Jewish community Shana Tova, since we are a cultural we. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to item 16, which is Action Items Business Services.
Good evening again. Let me share my screen. So the first resolution tonight, we asked the board to adopt is to authorize budget adjustments to our 22-23 budget to reflect the program fund balance, program deferred revenue and the carryovers from restricted fund, Fund 06. Most of those programs are the categorical programs. And since we have officially closed our last year's book, we have about 2.2 million carryovers from the restricted programs that we will need to bring into this year's budget to spend. So we'll ask the board to adopt this resolution so we can post those carryovers.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2023 dot 13.
Could we have a motion in a second? Scott, roll call, please.
Roll call vote. Board Member Si.
Aye.
Board Member Leon.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yipchuan.
Yes.
Pass is unanimous.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, so the next item is also to post the budget changes to our current year 22-23 budget to reflect the 21-22 carryover. And this is the carryover from our general fund. Most of them is the 3.1 million from the general fund and unrestricted programs. Those are the site allocations. Each year, we allocate a certain amount to the school side to spend, and then this is their program carryover. And then we also have some fund balance restricted from this categorical program. Most of those fund balance was the one-time funds that we received the last year during the COVID. And so we would like to ask the board to adopt this resolution so we can post those program carryovers into our book.
So, motion to approve 2023 dot 14.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, now, do we have any further questions or comments?
Just one quick thing, should we continue our practice of including our student board rep in the vote process, Madam President?
I know that there's certain things that we can and that we would like to.
So the process is that the student board rep would be asked first about what they would vote, though one area is that students can't vote on our personnel.
Yes, so we can roll, do the roll call vote, and then when Scott can include our student board reps. Thank you.
I will do that.
So are we in discussion now? We have a motion and a second?
Yes, we are.
Wendy, it says the unrestricted, where did it go? Is that the?
I just opened it.
You read my mind?
This is, yeah, this is the detail of all the unrestricted programs. We listed here, so we see the cost center, we track each program by cost center, and then total general fund and restricted, that's the 3.1 million, and this is what is, consists of. And so on for the Fund 06, the restricted program. And here are the programs, and this is their balance.
So I guess the other question that I had is that the resolutions look very similar except for one is carryover deferred revenue, and the other one is carryover ending fund balance? If you can provide a little bit of clarity for me on that?
Sure. And there are two types of funding stream provided by the state. One is the type of grants, it allows deferred revenue. That means we already receive their income, and, but we can only record up to the amount we spend, and then the balance of the income has to be deferred. That's called deferred revenue. So that was the first resolution. And we have a detailed attachment in that resolution. Also, we listed what are the programs are considered as a deferred revenue program. And then for fund balance, basically, some of the programs, we have not received the funds yet, but we received a entitlement letter, so the district is entitled to a X dollar amount, and we can spend up to that much. And up, and then if we have unspent balance, it will be called fund balance. And then throughout the year, we'll receive the funds from the state. So that is the main difference between those two.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Are there any virtual comments?
No virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no more comments, we'll take, go for a roll call vote.
Okay, did you want me to start with the student board reps?
Yes, please.
Okay. Student Board Rep Rocha.
Here.
We're asking for an a or a nay on Resolution 2023 point 1.4.
A.
Very good. And we have. And we have student board rep Sharma.
Aye.
Thank you. And then board member Tsai?
Yes.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board Clerk Nao?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, action number two, learning and development.
Good evening. Good evening. Today, we're asking the board to conduct a public hearing and adopt the Williams Compliance Board Resolution twenty-two-three dot one-twelve and compliance. This is verifying that all of our site, our individual sites have confirmed in writing or through email with each of their teachers that we have adequate textbook and instructional materials for all of our core subjects as appropriate to each grade level.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Yes, I can.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open public hearing.
Okay, roll call vote. Student board rep Rocha?
Aye.
Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Board member Tsai?
Yes.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board Clerk Nao?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the Resolution twenty-two-three dot twelve.
Okay, we have a motion to close public hearing and to adopt Resolution twenty-two-three point one-two. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Let's go for a roll call vote. There's no comments.
Okay, roll call vote. Student board rep Rocha?
Aye.
Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Board member Tsai?
Yes.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board Clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board VP Norwood?
Yes.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Okay, moving on to item three, human relations.
Good evening, President Yipchuan. Tonight, we have to conduct two public hearings. One on behalf of CSCA under the leadership of Suzette Brahmagin. We have posted for ten days the hearing notice so that the public has an opportunity to comment on any of the articles that CSCA would like to negotiate this year. And at this time, I recommend that we have that public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Student board rep Rocha?
Aye.
Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Board member Tsai?
Yes.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board Clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board VP Norwood?
Aye.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
We need a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
A second.
A motion and a second? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call vote. Student board rep Rocha?
Aye.
Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Board member Tsai?
Aye.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board Clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board VP Norwood?
Aye.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
Okay, the board accepts the article from CSCA to be negotiated with the district. Okay.
Thank you. And I know Suzette appreciates the district and all the place she represents and seeks to work collaboratively to review the entire collective bargaining agreement and any outdated language. Next, we have the Sunshine Articles that the district is proposing to negotiate with CSCA. So we'll repeat this process. And we've posted publicly the articles so the public would have this opportunity to have time to comment during our board meeting. At this time, we need to conduct a board hearing, I'm sorry, hearing to give public the opportunity to comment on the district requested items.
Move to open the public here. Second.
A motion and a second? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call vote. Student board rep Rocha?
Aye.
Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Student, or board member Tsai?
Aye.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board Clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board VP Norwood?
Aye.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Aye.
Passes unanimous. And we do have a hand raised for the public hearing. Suzette Brahmagin, we are going to enable your audio. You will have two minutes to speak. Take yourself off mute. And give us one second, Suzette. And there you go. Take yourself off mute and you're good to go.
Yes, hi. Good evening. This is Suzette Brahmagin, the president of our CSCA Local District Number Two Eighty-One Chapter. And I just want to thank all of you for approving our official proposals. And we look forward to a productive cooperation with the district on improving our contract. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call vote. Student board rep Rocha?
Aye.
Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Board member Tsai?
Yes.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board Clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board VP Norwood?
Aye.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
Thank you. And the district also looks forward to constructive, cooperative, and successful faith, good faith negotiations based on our longstanding positive relationship with CSCA. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, community.
Thank you, Jonathan. So we are now moving on to four, Superintendent's Office.
Thank you very much. We have our resolution for this month. Mr. Forsner?
Yes, so student members of the Chinese Club at Milpitas High School reviewed the resolution and produced the following video Resolution twenty-two-three point one-five honoring the anniversary of the birth of Confucius.
Whereas September twenty-eighth, five fifty-one B.C., is recognized as the date on which Confucius was born in the town of Qufu in what is now Shandong province of China. And?
Whereas Confucius, as one of the greatest thinkers, teachers, and social philosophers in history, developed a philosophy that has deeply influenced and continues to influence the social and political thought of countries around the world. And?
Whereas the teaching of Confucius that what one does not wish for oneself one ought not to do to anyone else, what one recognizes as desirable for oneself one ought to be willing to grant to others, is a model for ethical behavior and for the promotion of harmony among people. And?
Whereas Confucius taught that ideal government is founded upon loyalty, respect for elders, and recognition of the importance of family.
Now that the governing board of the Milpitas Unified School District honors the two thousand five hundred seventy-third anniversary of the birth of Confucius and recognizes his invaluable contributions to philosophy and social and political thought. Passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two by the following votes.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Roll call vote?
Okay, roll call vote. Student board rep Rocha?
Aye.
Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Board member Tsai?
Yes.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board Clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board VP Norwood?
Aye.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
Okay, item seventeen, consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless board members, members of the board staff or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for a discussion or correction. Are there any items?
I would like to remove seventeen I F for discussion.
Motion to adopt consent items except for?
Yeah, let me just take a look at what these are.
Motion to adopt consent items except for seventeen I F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt all except for seventeen I F. Is there, there's a second? Roll call vote, please, Scott?
Okay, student board rep Rocha?
Aye.
Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Board member Tsai?
Abstained.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board VP Norwood?
Aye.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Aye.
Passes four O with one abstention.
Okay. Seventeen I F. You pulled up a reason?
Yes, that's how I was just waiting for a queue. No, I appreciate it because we heard many members of the Rhodes community come up tonight talking about safety and security as far as the fencing project that's happening at the curtain of Rose and Weller, specifically asking about the Rose Elementary. I know that last year, Spangler, when they did the refencing, they closed off the back entrance. Rhodes also has a back entrance that the community uses as well. So I didn't see any architectural plans attached to this item. Could anyone from the staff just go over as far as that plan for the fencing?
Yeah, so what I can do is, I don't have the design here with me tonight. And I will ask Travis to email that to you. Or do you, do you want the entire board to receive that information?
I think I might also be able to help. We did architectural designs for, starting with Spangler, and then essentially used that as the model with DSA, Department of School Architecture, for approving all of subsequent projects.
Gotcha. I appreciate it because obviously the vendors are different from, between the two schools. So I just wanted to make sure that the plan is kind of uniform as far as addressing that.
Yeah, because each project, we have a different, I mean, we have a different study. And it also involves the input from the staff. Because each side, their physical surrounding is different. And the architect actually did a different design. So we will, I'll ask Travis to reach out then.
Yeah, I appreciate it because they have a specifically paved road entrance in the back.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you. With that said, if there's no other questions, I would motion to approve item F.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve seventeen I F. And there's, we have a second? Roll call vote, please, Scott?
Okay, student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Board member Tsai?
Yes.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Aye.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
Okay, number eighteen, dates of future board meetings. October eleventh, tentative study session at five P.M., tentative closed session at six P.M., open session at seven P.M., hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and Randall Elementary World Languages at thirteen hundred Edsel Drive. October twenty-fifth, tentative study session at five P.M., tentative closed session at six P.M., open study session at seven P.M., hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and Randall Elementary World Languages at thirteen hundred Edsel Drive. Number nineteen, announcement reminders. Are there any announcements or reminders, executive team member?
Yes. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jonathan. Okay, so I'd like to remind everybody that we have a COVID vaccination clinic coming up, October twenty-fifth at Burnett.
I would like to remind everybody that we are discussing the third language option for Randall School on October seventeenth.
I would like to remind everybody that the district is observing Indigenous Peoples' Day before our next board meeting.
All right, thank you very much. How about board members here?
Yeah, I would just like to make sure AB three sixty-one gets heard at the next possible opportunity. Thank you.
Nothing from my side.
Okay, was there something from trustee Lian?
Nothing for me, Madam President.
I did hear there was an invitation for homecoming, the homecoming from a high school earlier.
High school homecoming is Friday, October fourteenth.
Are we invited?
Yes.
Alrighty. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, Scott?
Roll call vote. Student board rep Sharma?
Aye.
Student, or board member Tsai?
Yes.
Board member Lian?
Yes.
Board clerk Nao?
Aye.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Aye.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Aye.
Passes unanimous.